People might imagine, because I've heard parents say, "I hope those Nassau teachers," this is a quote, "are as good as the Hagan teachers my kid had." They're going to be the same teachers. They're going across the road in units. I suspect that 95% of people who put in their requests put in the same grade level. So they're going to stay in the same grade. The principals are going to change. The Nassau students who come to Hagan, if things stay the way they are, are going to have a principal from Nassau. They know they got it. I believe her principal at Hagan, I can see her now in front of Nassau. She's going to be, when those buses come, she's going to greet the kids with a big smile, because everybody's going to be a Nassau star. That's what she does. She's going to welcome those kids. The other thing we've heard a lot about, as we move forward, because I don't want to make these points, you know, transportation, right? The transportation plan's got a lot better. It started out not real well. I think anytime you put Colonel Lowe or George Gifford, the troopers, in a room, you're going to have a good plan. That's what happened. Unfortunately, a couple aren't here tonight, but that's going to happen. That's what we had should- I could commit this from the start, but I've said that before, so I won't go back now. But the complaints about the transportation plan now seem to be that Route 9 is this really hazardous road. Without thinking that you can go to Nassau or Hagan without going on Route 9, I realize the plan has a quarter mile, okay? But at the same time, kids in the Spackenkill district, starting in kindergarten, have gone on Route 9 five times longer, including a guy who sits on the board, who has two daughters, who did that route from Peachwood and Field Court and all the different places along the way. They go on Route 9 every single day. They've been doing it for years. It's not going to be different. The bus rides not going to be long. And some parents complained about, I realize it's two different, you know, you can walk around and all that kind of stuff. A lot of people have time to develop their maps, because they won't put their kid on the bus. I think if you put your kid on the bus, I think that's just work. So no matter what you guys decide, and I'm going to wrap up, right? Those are things to think about. I'm going to walk back.
Fifth graders, and once in third, Nassau, you can head to. What happens when the second graders are in fifth grade and they're in K-1, 2, and they're in fifth? Because at some point, that's important.
I still have a question. I mean, from my perspective, honestly, it's tough for us to get behind GLS without knowing that there's a sustainable budget, you know what I mean, thought out, right? Because we've already talked about this. GLS is just a very small percentage of the overall thing. So my question is, or I guess my request is, that as you guys have these discussions, that you come up with a plan, not just for this year, but something that we can actually sustain, because you know what's coming next, you know, sports, you know, this, you know, that, and all the other thing, and now it would just be a travesty. So, you were shaking your head, so hopefully you guys are already thinking that way. You're into more of the budget, that's really sustainable, long-term. But it's a problem. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm actually a senior at the high school, and so this doesn't affect me at all. But there's kids even talking about this, because we all know about it. We come from most of the mean. This is really the best schedule to know me.
This is what we prepared you for.
I mean, I really think that you guys are all taking a weird perspective on this. The kids, none of us see that, like, the kids are going to hate each other, the kids are going to not be able to transition. I'm here in seventh grade, and I think seventh grade's a way harder time to transition into anything than second grade, because you're kind of okay with yourself in second grade. Seventh grade, you hate yourself. I mean, and I share by myself, so these kids, they're going to be coming from Nassau to Hagan or wherever it is. They're going to have all their classmates with them. They're going to know half their class, no matter where they are. They're going to be fine. Also, the teachers, the teachers will be there. And I think it's really important to educate the kids in kindergarten, first grade, like, get them in while they're young, so when they grow up, they don't have to be like these parents who are fighting with each other. It's ridiculous. It sounds insane. You're just five minutes away from each other, and you hate each other, and it's stupid. Really, it really is. And, like, I'm a trans- I don't know, like, still to this day, I'm finding out, "Oh, you went to Nassau? That's cool. Oh, you went to Hagan? That's cool." Like, I'm in AP classes and honors classes. There's Hagan kids and Nassau kids. There's kids, I don't know where they came from. I came from Kingston. Like, I think that's kind of worse than Hagan and Nassau. And I'm one of the, I mean, I don't want to, like, turn cocky or anything, but, like, I'm president of a club. I'm secretary of my class. I'm secretary of the school. Like, I'm a well-respected kid in my school. I'm one of the highest student leaders we had, so, like, if I can do it, I think I really can.
I have a question for you. Mind your own home, because that's what I think about, is the budget. This year, we had a exceptionally good budget. That means heating goes away now. You've got all these buildings, and what would the cost be that you're going to get back, to return to the budget for next year, from the previous budget of last year, in regards to maintenance that didn't have to be done from snowshover, and oil or gas that hadn't been purchased beneath the buildings, which you did repurchase?
During next week's presentation that the superintendent's going to do, our projected fund balance for the end of the year will be included in that. Included in that projection is money that we saved from energy costs due to the letter and also due to our new energy app program that we implemented.
Okay.
In addition to that, there's no accounting cost for our custodians and our groundspeople, who do not have to do as much power this year.
That'll be factored in as a return. That'll be added to your budget for next year.
Absolutely.
It's not going to be put aside in some rainy day fund. It goes back to the future budget, right?
It's called appropriated fund balance, and that's what goes to reduce the levy for next year. Someone's up to it.
Hi, Dan Kohler, MLD Drive. I just had a couple of questions about some of the presentations earlier. I wanted to know where the reference was to 30 being a suggested class size. And I also wanted to get a discussion going on the 33% number of incoming sixth graders that require AIS and 18% of incoming sixth graders that require special education that require resource group. What I wanted to know regarding that is if there's a comparison or a website or something that shows how many percentages for other schools in the area, so we can make a correlation to how our students are doing versus other school students. I don't know if anybody can answer that right now, or...
There are websites that tell the test results in terms of percentages of students achieving mastery. And if you would leave us, like an email or a phone number that we can get back to, we'll give that to you. As far as percentage of an individual in class that is in AIS or classified students, I don't know of any way of comparing to other districts, other than to simply, you know, through conversations, asking them. This grade level that Mr. Mountensher was talking about is unique in that the preceding grade level had nowhere near those numbers. Our average for special education district-wide is in the 10 to 11% range, which is consistent with the state and national norms. The AIS, I know that the 33% is high, and that's why he made a point of it. I don't know what his percentage was for this year. You know, we can give you an idea of how it compares to our other grades, but I don't know how we would get that from other districts, other than to ask them for it. And to be honest, right now, they're getting data requests from the state and now, I mean, but we can get to some of that for our district.
I was just standing by the 33%, I mean...
We were too.
One in three, you know?
No, you're right. It's highly unusual.
Okay.
Oh, and the question about the 30, Mr. Fanny, you always step down, so I can get that too also, if you need to give us your contact info.
That's the end of our...
Oh, sorry. My name is Dana. I'm from Nassau. And my son is in fourth grade, excuse me. And a couple of years ago, you know, you guys made the decision to put one of the teachers and put the two classes together. You know, we had a lot of comments about that, and you guys just went ahead and did it anyway, and the kids did suffer from that. And everybody's talking about transition. Well, we have a new principal, no disrespect, but that was a big transition for our kids this year. So they're going to be transitioned again to over to Hagan. I just feel like you guys don't have the whole grade level school down, and, you know, it's really all about quality, and it just seems like you're moving towards the Hagan side. I think it's pretty sad.
I agree with the student who spoke. Really, you guys keep together, stretching, you are one school here, okay?
Nancy. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on, I'm sorry.
The kid, I, I think that the kids are moving buildings, but it's just a building. The teachers are moving with them. The students are moving with them. You know, the person who spoke said they moved here from China, or whatever. That's not the same thing, okay? You're talking about the kids are moving with their friends, with their teachers, with their principals, you know? And they are going to take cues from their parents, and if their parents give them positive vibes, they're going to feel good about it. I mean, my daughter's a senior, and she said she thought it would have been really cool to switch schools. "Oh, I'm going to the big school now. I'm in third grade. I get to go to the big school now." You know, I mean, really, if the parents give it a positive spin, the kids will have a positive spin. But if the parents are going to act like they're at war with each other, then that's going to transfer to the kids, you know? So, you know, this is, GLS is a done deal. Just go with it and make it a positive experience for your kids. And come to the play, because it's going to be wonderful. Watch 23, 24, 25 this weekend. There are flyers over there. It's during the picnic, 7:30 Friday and Saturday, and Sunday at 8:00.
Okay, so, that's the end for the season. Oops, sorry.
Hi, Dawn Flippin. I live back in Colorado. I'm a kindergarten and fifth grader. And I could barely hear you with that cooler blowing over there, so just wanted to make sure I understand clearly. For the next board meeting, you will consider leaving everybody in place, phasing in kindergarteners to Nassau, starting next year, for a silver transition, which I'll be thrilled with, as far as, if GLS has to go through and you know I oppose it, it keeps all the students equally in their own schools, I would like to see them merge. I would like to see you take a year and do it, slowly acclimating the kids to the different schools. My ideal scenario with GLS is you take an entire school year and acclimate 3 through 5 to the other building, K through 2 to the other building, so it feels like a second home, and they walk right in there, very comfortable. If that can be, and this is the only way that we can do this, and we can't take GLS off the table, I think it's fair to everyone. And you know, I don't care where my kids are. If you want to take GLS off the table and say, "How many parents will send your kids to Nassau, so we even out the class sizes?" I would send both my children to Nassau. You know, if that's what it takes to make sure that we maintain as many teachers, as many programs, and the most available for every child K through 12, that's what my family's willing to do. With that said, I just wanted to clarify what, so next meeting, you have to then decide, if not, then you have to decide what the format looks like. And I again encourage you, if we can afford this for a year, and you can take one year and leave us as is and do this properly, and still meet your budgetary needs, and still maintain as much quality as we can in the upper grades, I think it's wise to do it properly. One of the things that I became more aware of, you know, with the older children and the younger children being together, this is the first year I've ever had that scenario. My third grader did not have a regular buddy system with older peers. He did it on occasion. My kindergarten is blessed to have Colleen Drummond for a kindergarten teacher, and she and Mrs. Skorlick have buddied up our classes with Skorlick's third grade. And I have never been a part of this before. And this week, I'll give you one example, and I want you to take this into consideration going forward. A, encouraging the schools to do this regardless of whether they're split. But if GLS occurs, and when it is final, that those are two separate grades, putting in place regular interaction. What I saw last week, we went in to make traps for leprechauns, and I'm like, "This is so cute." You know, trap a leprechaun, that's been messing up their room. And I expected these kids to come together with their third grade buddies that they were very excited to be with and make these cute little traps. They didn't know what was going to be. Donated on the table of arts and crafts material, and great, we're going to have fun. The children were told to go view the table, see what was there. I had two third graders and three kindergarteners with me. What I saw go on was to make the ideal educational environment. I watched five children under the age of nine strategically plan better than most adults have lately, to tell you the truth. These children sat down, made a list of supplies, with very, very little guidance and suggestion from the adults. They all picked boxes and gold coins, obviously, and I said, "You know, you want to consider, if that's the only materials you have, that's all you'll have to work with, so maybe you should each pick two or three supplies that are different from the person..." That was the only guidance they were given. They worked together. They thought this through. They made sure that everyone involved had their own piece to it equally. The older children guided the younger children, saying, "Okay, who wants to glue?" Who, you know, whatever the child was best suited for. So they were strategically planned, organized themselves, appointed who was best suited with the best strengths to do each job. And when they decided to make a decision last minute or something wasn't working, they worked together as a group. We were making leprechauns traps. But this is the type of educational environment that I, being an outsider at Spackenkill, expected from my children at all times. And I highly urge you, whether it's this year, next year, that the schools both implement it more often, and especially if we go K through 2, 3 through 5. If it's only twice a year, and I've said this before, instead of pumpkin picking, we send them over to Hagan, you will do two things. You will keep that mentor program going, which could be very, very valuable going forward as they get older. In middle school and high school, if there's some way to continue on that type program or institute it, I think with this day and age, it could be really, really valuable. It will allow those children to visit the other school once a year. So kindergarten goes to see their third graders once a year, and the third graders go back to Nassau. That allows those children to go home, to their home school, once a year. They can do a pen pal thing throughout the year, because it would only be twice a year. They would be transporting. We can cut out other field trips and make this happen. We pay $5 to send our kids pumpkin picking. We'll save money on gas, not going all the way out to the hills. That could be used for something else. But it brings those children back to their home environment. The education that went on, and I don't know, maybe this was just a fluke, and I have a pensia environment with those two teachers, but the amount of learning that went on should be going on every day in a school district that prides itself on excellence like Spackenkill. And I wish you could have sat among them to watch how brilliant they were learning and having fun. And that's what an early education should be. And like I said, throughout the year, they can pen pal, but it can be educationally based. We are gearing up our children for these third grade tests, and I walked in with you saying, "We have kindergarten," or someone saying, "kindergarten tests." We could utilize these times where the third graders can help these children with whatever they're testing, and that could be their pen pal, math mentor, whatever, that is not taking valuable class time away. Because it sounds like there's more and more put on the teachers and less and less time to do it. And we could use this as yet another scenario for these children to learn brilliantly in.
Just to clarify a couple of things. What I'm looking at next meeting is from a report back from the superintendent, the kindergarten-only option for feasibility from a physical standpoint of the school and a cost estimate to consider. To me, the first grade Hagan is still on the table, as well as keeping everything as is right now is on the table. So there's really three options, but a real important piece that we don't have right now is the information on whether it will fit at Nassau and what cost implications are.
If that happens, and we're only phasing kindergarten, does that still limit Nassau to just one fifth-grade class because of enrollment numbers?
Yes.
Because I think that's something that you need to look at and pose to the Nassau parents as far as limiting them to only one fifth-grade class. I really, I don't know how that would work. I don't know how that works for this year, still giving them the option if they want, because that could be a detriment to their fifth graders, but serving the entire population.
Hi, Mary Masorelli. I'm Hagan. I'm curious to know how you guys feel that you've handled this GLS issue. And in reference to parent involvement for the future in other issues, how you're going to get better parent involvement in making these decisions, such as the GLS? But in general, like I said, how do you guys feel thus far with how you've handled this GLS issue?
I think it was not handled well, so that is a simple answer. There's a lot of things that could have been done differently. There was different reactions to that, I think, weren't handled well from a community standpoint, but all in all, it could have been handled differently. And I'm not sure, in the long run, a lot of this still wouldn't have played out if the answer was to go to grade-level schools. So, you know, beating around the bush, but it may have been a little less, more tempered going into it. That's my opinion, just mine. And that was the second part of that question, I'm sorry.
Basically, in essence, I guess a lesson has been learned.
Yeah, I mean, we've done committees before, and we actually started with a committee on grade-level schools a couple of few years ago, so sometimes, yeah, we didn't go back to committee, because we had to committee, and maybe that was a mistake. But certainly, budget implications are part of it too, and knowing that we have to do it, and we have to look, unfortunately, further ahead than we've had to before in this budget piece. Normally, we, and most school districts, have just looked at the upcoming year, and nowadays, with the 2% cap and mandates, you'd really have to look further ahead. And that hasn't been a pleasant thing, which has maybe brushed things out of the hair. But I don't think that much that it still has to get done, and, but we're looking, I mean, I'm looking at, this year, there is not a major cost saving. I see it coming down the road in future years, when things are going to have to be made, which is why I think possibly that compromise, if it fits, from my perspective, and I'm not sure it will, in Nassau might be a good option to do a phase-in, which might have been a better option to begin. It's just my two cents, but it's just something that we haven't done.
I'll probably go down, I'll stay in my... Turn the camera off for a minute? No, piss poor man. It was poorly handled, I think, and I'm going to, I really didn't, never like to do this in public, but I think the administration made a mistake in some of the information that was presented. I think they took the approach that it was strictly financial, when, I mean, I never looked at it as strictly financial, but maybe at that point, the board should have directed the superintendent to expand that. But I do agree with Ralph. I mean, it was going to be emotional, no matter what happened, but I think, I think we could have done a better job. And I, but, you know, we sat here, we fought through this, and I think we've come up with what I believe is a plan that everybody can live with. I think it would be better for the district in the long term. I think we're fortunate that we don't have to make this drastic move next year. And hopefully, we can take this year, as we phase in, and continue to plan, like Mike said over there, I mean, budgetary, longer term. I mean, this is the beginning of a tough stretch for the next, I would say, two or three years. And we've got to, we've got to plan better than we've been planning on many facets, not just, not just an issue like this, but an issue as big as this should have been given more time at the beginning.
I think this is an unprecedented time, that although Ralph's been on the board since the Stone Age, he's never seen anything like this, and neither have any of us. And mistakes were going to be made along the way, because it's new to all of us. I know that we all tried our damnedest to understand the issues and work hard at doing it. As far as communication with the rest of the district, it would be nice to be able to have people come to meetings and show up like this, but we're talking about some smaller items on the agenda that we always, that we're here for to talk about. But we, and I have to say, I've been here a little bit longer than Mike, but since Mike first came on the board, he and I have both been pushing to try to help make it a more open process, more transparent process. It hasn't happened overnight, and we're trying to make it more open. Just us talking at the meetings like this is much better than what we did in the first year that I was on the board. So it's a long process. It's coming. There were problems with the issue, but we're up here trying to get it right, and we need help from everybody in the community, and we're starting to get that, and that's going to make it better.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. So therefore, do your utmost best to, I know these board meetings are here for us, and continue harder to keep the parents on the same level, so we don't feel like we're being sardonic. But it was nice hearing your sound, you're human. Thank you.
Okay, so we all admitted this wasn't planned very well, so I'm not waiting here. But you know, this is cause you don't want, at least, you've admitted it, it's poorly planned. You're now listening to the public. Now you're realizing things that aren't worked out. You know, at the beginning, hold on, Ralphie. At the beginning, we were going to have a grade-level schooling, and I just gave you 2, 3 through 5. We were like, okay, we're happy, but okay. Then it was like, okay, let's make provisions for the fourth grade, then go on to the first grade, that's all. We all agreed to that, okay, fine. Now let's make provisions for the picking in 10 years. I mean, honestly, it's not working. You've admitted it, it's not, it's not, we're not playing that well. We're all willing to work with you, what we all want with our children. It's not going to save them the money next year, let's wait a year.
And that's, in my estimation, that's the problem. That's why we were moving forward this year, is to get it in place, so when we needed cost savings, it was available if necessary.
It's not working, no.
And I think we have ways to do it.
It is working, and it will work in the end, but we have to start someplace. And if the transition into the third grade is where we need to start, I think that's the best and easiest way to transition into this. We cannot maintain the neighborhood schools any longer.
I agree.
When I'm done, I'll let you know. When, well, you cut me off, you cut me off before.
I'm just, excuse me?
When I'm done, you have all of your time, believe me. Let me go down the road where I'm going. When I'm, when I am through, you have all the time you want, except three minutes. The, we have to look at other options, whether we like them or not. We have to. If we don't find a different way of doing business, we're going to have a lot more problems in the future on cuts, on teachers, on programs. We need to find some other way to make this work. A grade-level school does give us that option, and if we start it this year, when we do need these savings, just like Ralph was saying, we will be in a position to say, "Okay, we can, maybe we can, if we have the financial availability, we can go to a larger session in one spot, or maybe we'll have to go to a lower one." But the way we're at right now, it's, we can't do it that way, just because of the way it's Nassau and Hagan. Is it, I wasn't, I was opposed to going to grade-level schools, but I know that it's something that we definitely have to find a way to change. We need to find this, so we can find some cuts late, in four years, five years. You've asked for a long-term project or a program that's going to save money, without knowing what the state's going to give us in next year, it's hard to say what your budget is and what you're going to have to work with. I just learned the 2% cap. We didn't know it was coming until it was here. Go ahead, your turn.
Okay, yeah, with that said, you voted initially no. Again, I heard everything you had to say. You take a lot of things into perspective from your, but you did not plan this out. It was poorly planned. So I know in the long term, this will save money. Give it a year, get all the facts together, get everything together, listen to the public, and then, we're willing to go grade-level school, but what you did this year, you admit, was done wrong. So just give it another year.
I hear what you're saying, believe it, but I just don't think that we can wait that much longer. We got to start someplace. And if this, if we do go with something like this, it's the easy, it's the fairest of dishes, the fairest of cake.
I just wanted to ask you a question. Did you say before that the first graders are...
Just the first one?
No, you said a couple. You said first grade is still on the table, but at the second meeting, you voted that the first graders would stay, they didn't have to transition.
Oh, I misspoke, kindergarten, Stone. I apologize. I misspoke, no, you're absolutely correct.
Tom, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said we can't continue doing business this way. I don't disagree at all.
What I like to do, yes.
That waiting a year buys us is we're, say, six months into negotiations for a teacher contract. You don't, by the way, let me ask this question. Did anybody, was a letter sent to the teacher union informing them of an intent to negotiate?
We've actually had meetings.
Okay, great, that's wonderful. So, you're right, we can't continue doing business this way. But what GLS buys us is a slash and burn on our teaching staff. 10.4 teachers in three years, that's what it buys us. And in a year, we'll know more of what the next three years are gonna look like because we'll know more about our mandated costs, we'll know about our labor costs. We can make better long-term decisions in six months, eight months. So, why are we considering that? Why are we rushing into this?
Is that for me or for?
For anybody who might be aware of the cost.
The answer to me is you may know more about your labor cost, you may not. You may have some of those answers, you may not. And we do know that there's a tax cap and we do know that you're never gonna know your incoming aid years in advance. So, what you're asking for is, and even this year, with the number being zero we used in the teacher's contract as a raise, we were still looking at 1.3 million, which will slightly reduce now because of a lower increase in healthcare. But it's still a significant number even with zero. So, I don't suspect the contract is going to buy us completely out of that. There's still gonna be issues. There's gotta be work from all angles, it's gotta be contractual, it's gotta be at the state to try and change things there. It's gotta be state aid, it's gotta be, you know, possibly overriding tax cap at some point. I mean, there's a lot of different options.
I agree, there's a lot of factors, but this would be one of the things we look at.
No, it's one of, we're looking at a lot of things, and the budget presentation, this is one of them.
Okay, so I'd ask you to consider year four, when we're down to four sections across the board, going through five, five sections of kindergarten. What do we have? We've been told we can't cut administration. We've cut teachers to the bone. What do we do at the elementary level, the state level?
And there's options, it may be high school level, it may be other things. I don't have a perfect answer to that because a lot of, again, you can't wait five years to do something either, but there's going to be, there's going to be. There's going to be hope. I don't know if there's gonna be change in the state law, I'm hoping for that, but I can't guarantee it. I mean, there's a lot of factors. As school districts, and you read in the paper, all the districts and all the things are considering, very little of it, very popular, will well that at the political folks in Albany and maybe they'll have a change of heart in some part of the law. But again, it's nothing I can count on. So, we've gotta set ourselves up to be able to maintain a school district. And that's, I think, what we're doing the most equitable way possible.
Yeah, I'm from Anderson, we're steering for. Just like you said, there's a lot of windows, you have to set yourself up. I also feel like, well, if we make all these cuts and at the end of the game here, the state comes in and decides to help us out, then we went through and we cut a lot of teachers and stuff like that that we could have maybe held on to. And so I just feel like, we don't know really what's gonna happen with the tax cap. We don't know if it's gonna stay or if they're gonna come in on their white horses and do something. But with the contracts, I just, I would hate to go through all this and then maybe things get, are gonna be better than what we projected, you know? And if our first year is not really gonna save us that much money, we could push it back a year and then maybe together as a community, come up with some ideas where we could save more money the first year of implementing your GLS plan. I mean, that's just the way I think about it. But I know you've mentioned before, one, you know, I don't know what the feasibility of that is. We've never really, I don't think we've ever really looked at that to a great extent. But I just hate to think that we're just gonna cut because we're scared of all these things that could happen. But yet, the first year, we're really not reaping much benefit from it. So maybe we could get a plan where we can implement the GLS, say, next year, and with the community involvement and everybody behind you, we could maybe make ways where we can cut even more to actually make that first year a little better off than what this first year.
I guess the way I'm looking at it, if, and it's an if, if the kindergarten option were adopted, I look at it as we're pushing it back two years to implement GLS, not one year. So, by starting phasing in kindergarten, you're literally pushing back GLS two years because you won't have full GLS for two years. And that's when we will need the money if we need. I think that's perfect timing in my book.
Maybe we could cut that a lot out, maybe one year, still make it on time. Be a better way. You know what I'm saying? I just. I mean, we've already, this is the first time I felt like you guys actually listened. Both sides, we made our record that great and you guys may have rushed into the plan a little bit or maybe didn't get the information out there correctly. But a lot of people close, gotta save $900,000, and it's not. Not even close to that. You know what I'm saying? I just, that's.
I don't know where they would have gotten that from.
Well, from you guys, this is the first meeting, you guys were using.
That was arranged and it's over time.
That's what you're saying, and actually.
It was never just $900,000.
But Ralph, actually, the last, the last meeting, when you put it all up on the board versus GLS and non-GLS, that really shed light on the whole fact that we're really not saying anything.
No, you are, it's not $900,000.
I realize it would be more, I realize it would be flexible. To make changes, I think there's a better way to do it. I know you guys aren't gonna go back on your plan or anything like that, but I just, I have to say. I just think that we could put it off another year and implement it better. And or if you go with that two-year phasing, maybe that'll make people happy. But I just, I just think it'd be, well, it's not worth everything.
Hi, my name is Sandra Gershia, my daughter goes to Hagan. I also grew up here and attended school, kindergarten through high school. I'm confused, I skipped the last few meetings because they got me too upset, I stopped cutting. But I got confused when someone came up and said that we can't cut administration. Is that, when did that happen? Didn't someone come up here and just say that we can't take monies from administration? I mean.
I thought you just said that.
So I didn't know if I'm missing things. You know, in November, you guys brought this up that we were gonna save about $387,000 the first year. I don't remember the $900,000, but I remember around $387. And you guys based your vote on that, correct? That's what it was, I was at all of those meetings and that's what it was about. We had to save a million dollars and this was gonna save us about $387,000. Now it seems like we're not saving any money this year, so where are we gonna save that million dollars that was so urgent that we do this right away?
Actually, we have saved about $450,000 if we went to full implementation this year of that.
So why aren't we doing that? It should either just be done, and I don't, I'm sorry for people who have kindergarten and first graders, kids are much more resilient than you think. I mean, my daughter had leukemia, you wouldn't believe what she went through and she's very happy, she's fine, she's, you know, they can take a lot, much more than you think. You either, either we really need this money this year, this is what I'm saying, this is how it was presented in the beginning, so we go to full GLS or we don't do it. That's the way it should be. And why is it, why are we not able to go back? I feel like they need this vote because of finances, but now it seems like it's many other things control this vote. And why is it said in stone that we can't go back and revisit this or we can't take another vote? Why? Who says that? Isn't this, I mean, there's a lot of money we can save. We have teacher contracts coming up. We have all these teachers' kids that don't live in the district that come here, that gets special, who gets special ed, who gets this, who gets that? And they don't even pay the taxes here. That makes me very angry. When I pay taxes, I'm two homes in Spagengill. Okay, I'm paying over $24,000 for two homes. And everybody has all this input, I mean, do you live in the district? Do you live in the district? Do you live in the district? You guys all live in the district, guys, because you're on the board, correct? I mean, I'm thinking out loud like Arisha was doing before. I just, I don't come to all the meetings, like I said, because it's very upsetting. And, you know, then you have to wonder, are the teachers gonna say, well, oh, that's the mom who doesn't want us to take our kids here, you know, because we don't live here. There's no, like, there's just so many things that go on in this school. It's not what it was when I grew up here. It's, there's always a hidden agenda. I mean, there's so much, we keep talking about Dr. Powell, money that you have for our car allowance, for example, $400 a month. People keep bringing it up and bringing it up. That's something, like, can that be taken off? That's $5,000 a year, right? Is that really necessary with the salary you make? I mean, my husband was laid off a year and a half ago. He worked in the financial district for ten, Ralph, if anyone minds. And you guys really take a long time to say things. I mean, Tom said quite a few minutes, you have, I really never get up here.
It's our meeting.
So I'll read mine now.
You have, no, it's an order meeting. And it's a three-minute time limit, you've been about five. So I would just like to be there and we're gonna be one time only.
Where you said there, Ralph, the road, I'm a Hagan parent and I want you to know that it's not about Hagan, Nassau.
Excuse me, please, what's what?
My daughter has her first boyfriend and he's one of those Nassau's kids and I like him. Just saying. I think what you're forgetting here, and nobody's really come out and say it. I sent you all a note about a month ago, not one of you bothered to respond to me, which I think is a big problem. I think you're forgetting that we all nominated you and you're there to represent us. And you're not doing that. You're not representing the community that's telling you they don't want this. You are there to represent the entire community and, as I stated in my note that I sent to all of you, instill good faith in the community. And I think you have divided this community unbelievably, more than I have seen in my nine years in this district.
I just wanna say that you cut off certain people, but not others? I don't know if you.
I've cut, just fast.
No, you haven't, you haven't.
You let him try and put it in.
You didn't cut him off. You don't like the information that you're hearing?
If you keep going, I let you infringe on it a little bit, but.
Okay, so I'll wait till the end and I'll speak again, to the very end.
Once only, it's ten minutes to allow, so.
Yeah, but the board has presented things, you guys are a little bit, you know, you talked a little bit, you know, you didn't even let us start talking until 10 o'clock.
It's our job to be talking, that's what the meeting is, it's supposed to be us discussing.
And we should really look for a different board next time, we really need to do that and start to elect different people on this board.
Hi, I'm Doris Conti, and I would like to say that I did send an email and got a response from Ralph, so we got one email back, so thank you. But I would like further clarification on one of the points. I have been asking this a couple of times. Have you as the board asked the administration to prepare a plan about what the triggers are for closing Nassau? Ralph, you commented to me that there are, you know, with the economic times, the numbers aren't sustainable. Have you looked at the numbers and estimated that out and asked the board to present a formal proposal on what are the triggers and what numbers in enrollment do we need to have that happen? Because honestly, a lot of the issues that apparently are now trying to be solved with grade level schools, which used to be financial and now are equity and, you know, unity, and not financial, can be solved if you go to one grade, one school completely. So what are the triggers? What numbers in enrollment do you need in the school district as a whole to actually evaluate it? Have you asked for a plan?
We could ask for numbers, but that wouldn't be school district as a whole and that would obviously be elementary.
No, you'd have to look at it as a school district as a whole because moving fifth grade to Todd is an option.
See, I'm, we're.
You still have to look at it as an option, Ralph. You may be opposed to it, but it is an option. We, you know, I'm not from this district originally, but I have heard way back when, sixth grade didn't used to be in Todd. That's true, that's true. So, and I'm sure parents were opposed to that. So I don't think, maybe it's the best option, but I heard Mr. Malkishir and Mr. Vanuoli go through cuts that are serious cuts that I do not want to see happen in the district. I don't want to see sports cut, I don't want to see language taken away in sixth grade, I don't want to see other programs, you know, studio and art, I'm sure some people really want to see that continued. I don't want to see those cuts happening. You have seen no financial savings in year one of grade level schools. You have no proposals to further, you know, look at other long-term options. So this rolling in plans actually makes it worse. I don't want to see $1 spent on grade level school implementation that could be spent funding Mr. Malkishir's programs here in Todd or at the high school level. Thirty kids in an honor class, you know, this is, I'm sure that the kids can survive and they'll all do well and they'll get into good schools, but the reality is, is that we have, you know, we don't wanna make those decisions. And this decision is not made for financial reasons. And you've admitted it tonight, so I actually thank you for that because I've asked you repeatedly what the primary reason for this is, starting with my conversation with Dr. Powell, Ralph, you echoed it, that it was made, we recommended this for financial reasons. There are no recommendations that remain about financial for this proposal in year one. That can't, you can make 450, the same cuts, we've seen numbers that show that.
It's about $100,000. But that's, I mean, this year, what's in it, what's in that?
With all these other changes that you're making, I, and issues that are gonna crop up that are unexpected, I don't believe it just saved a penny.
Now, that would still include cutting teachers because the other alternative that was presented was cutting teachers and enlarging class sizes. With grade level schools, you have the flexibility of keeping class sizes smaller.
When, Arisha, in year two, you go to 28. When did you, when did you keep up?
Yeah, that was not approved.
I heard all five of you say that the reason is to get savings in the year two and three. What are those savings if you're not gonna go to 28?
The other options that some of the community presented were options of making class sizes bigger this year.
What is your option to get, you're gonna get there anyway, you're gonna get there. If you're against getting to 28 each, which you have stated that you are, I don't see why you would be in support of grade level schools at all. It gets us to 28 in year two, that's the only recommendation Powell's giving. I think you should be asking about the triggers around now, so I don't, I don't see why you're not looking at that. At least ask what the enrollment numbers are that make that happen. If you get to four per grade in Hagan, which is what year two plan is, four class sizes, you go with fifth up to the middle school, you take actions to divide it, it's owned separately, and then you close Nassau, you get your equity and unity in your single school. And if you're not asking for that proposal, you are not thinking long range. In the final 10 seconds, will you ask the board to give you, the administration to give you a proposal on the triggers to close Nassau?
So, I've always been, what I'm not, let me just say what I'm not gonna do is hold up this decision based on that answer right now.
You don't want to think strategically?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not going to hold up the decision that we're gonna make next week about, at a minimum, putting the grade, you know, all the kindergartners into Nassau. We're not gonna close the school next year, I don't think we can hold it off. But I believe, I actually do believe that one, eight, five is the long-term solution. I am opposed to moving fifth grade to that, I mean, I am opposed to that. Like, we start next year and ask, we're not gonna get this proposal by this budget time. You understand that? I mean, you realize that?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
You could have asked for it six months ago and not, but I realize that you won't get it now. However, you're not also getting a lot of savings this year either. So, to me, if you wanna think strategically, you need to ask. So to me, if you wanna think strategically, you need to ask for that information.
The answer is yes, I'm going to, not about, we can ask for other triggers to close Nassau, or it's a way to come up with a K through five school, which I have informally said we're gonna do, you know, I'm gonna ask as soon as we get through this year's budget decision. I know you think that's not, but you gotta get through it, I mean, it's coming quickly, very quickly.
Well, I don't wanna see one dollar spent on grade level schools that's gonna take away from programs at Todd or the high school level. Thank you.
At the end of the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No comment.
No comment from the board, I'm sorry. We didn't have enough?
No, I'm just, I just have one thing, because of the timing, I mean, I'm not thinking of doing it tonight, but I think everyone should know that I've chosen, I'm not running for the board next, just coming here, this is the position, it was very difficult that I started thinking about in July, and it has come, it has nothing to do with grade level issues, but it was tough. I mean, I love this school district, and I will continue to be involved in this school district, but for a lot of reasons, career, personal, a lot of reasons, I'm choosing to run next year.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay, do you want to hear a margin of confusion? Yeah.